Moving on to Article 37, see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw 3580.32, land clearing soil erosion and habitat impacts. Do I have a motion? Sorry, do I have a motion? Folks, I'm sorry, there's a lot of rustling and whatnot, I didn't hear them. Is there a motion?
Yes.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Do we have some information from the petitioner?
This article would limit the amount of the large ground mounted solar arrays to five acres, and we are asking that if the land has been cleared that nothing can be built on it for five years, and this has nothing to do with, you know, forestry, only if it's been cleared for commercial mining.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open it for debate. Mr. Moore?
Yes, Savery Moore, 12 South Main Street. I'd like to amend this article. The amendment would be to amend Article 37 to remove G B P, General Business Park, from the list of zoning districts that require a special permit from the planning board or L S G M S P I under Section 5300.
Okay, thank you, sir. from the list of items in the section that discusses an L G M S P I consisting primarily of a disturbed area and so on. So with that said, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Do you have any information to add, Mr. Moore?
Yes, first of all, G B P does not stand for General Business Park, it stands for Green Business Park. So right away, the article is incorrect. There is only one Green Business Park in Carver. It is the area north of 44, west of 58, and bordered by the Middleborough and Plimpton. It is, in the explanation for this petition article, it immediately mentions the Plymouth Carver sole source aquifer. The Plymouth Carver sole source aquifer encompasses approximately 95% of the footprint of Carver. The 5% that it does not encompass is the Green Business Park. So there's no reason to include the Green Business Park in this article, because it is not part of the sole source aquifer which is cited in the explanation as the reason for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We'll go ahead and open the amendment up for debate.
I would just like to make, Kim Shea, 148 Plumwood Street, I would just like to clarify something here, that even though the Green Business Park does not sit on top of the sole source aquifer, it is part of the Taunton watershed, that Taunton watershed feeds the sole source aquifer. So aquifers, you have surface aquifers and deep aquifers. So I think the statement made by Mr. Moore is a little misleading, not intentionally, but just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Okay, seeing no hands raised or motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put the amendment up for vote. It does require a majority vote, and we'll go ahead and open the vote now and give you 20 seconds. Okay, the amendment fails. 100 yes and 109 no. Going back to the main motion, we'll go ahead and continue debate. Ms. Dormer?
Can I make amendment to change it to the Green Business Park? That was a typo.
Okay, I have a motion to change the G B P, I'm assuming G B G, G B P, General Business Park to Green Business Park. We will need it in writing, please. Motion's been made and seconded. We'll go ahead and open it for debate while we're waiting for the written Okay, and seeing no hands and no motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. It requires a majority vote, and we'll go ahead and open the vote now and Okay, please close the vote. It's all right. So the motion passes, 57% to 43%. So it's 117 yes and, sorry, 118 yes and 99 no. Okay, so we have amended the article so that G B P now denotes Green Business Park, and we'll go ahead and entertain any further debate on the main motion. Okay, seeing no hands raised and no motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put it to a vote. On Article 37, citizen's petition, we will require a majority vote, and we will give you 20 seconds and open the vote. It was a two-thirds, I'm sorry. And there's also a planning board recommendation on this, I'm sorry, it was zero to five. So yeah, this requires a two-thirds vote. We will go ahead and open the voting now Close the vote, please. Okay, the motion fails with 74 yes and 136 no. Moving on to Article 38, to see if the town will vote to amend the Carver zoning bylaw by adding a new section, 3580.70. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Motion's been made and seconded on Article 38. Ms. Dormer, do you have some information to share?
What we're asking for is a moratorium for 11 and a half months on the construction of dual-use solar arrays and floating solar. We're asking the town to engage in a study and planning process to determine the total number of existing dual-use solar installations in town already, the number of solar panels on each, the number of lithium ion battery storage units associated with each, and the amount, status, and terms of the financial surety of each.
Thank you, Ms. Dormer. Go ahead and open it for debate. Yes, Mr. Moore?
Hi, Savery Moore, 12 South Main Street. Just as a point of clarification, on the top of Page 56, there is a sentence that says, "A floating solar project is proposed to be located on a pond created by an industrial sand and gravel mining operation." Just so everyone is clear, the floating solars are only allowed on reservoirs, man-made reservoirs. They are not allowed on ponds, so this wouldn't affect Sampson's Pond or Cooper's Pond or Muddy Pond. Just a clarification on what is allowed with floating solar.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Yes, sir?
Steve Ward, 46 Mile Standis Drive. Once again, we just went through this process. We had a really good committee go over the solar bylaws and battery bylaws, so I would vote this down.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
Bruce Mackey, 9 Thatcher Street. I don't believe that this would get past the Attorney General. Just like to, through you, Mr. Moderator, to ask Mr. Corbo if, I know when we spoke with you at a committee meetings, you told us that anything restrictive would not be allowed by the Attorney General, and also that the other articles that had been presented at the last town meeting didn't really show any harm done to the town, any pollution or anything else like that that would qualify for a moratorium. I don't think this is going to pass.
So is the question whether the article is, in his estimation, legal?
Yes, exactly.
Do you want to offer an opinion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So at this town meeting last year, the body approved a moratorium on large-scale solar facilities. That bylaw went to the Attorney General for review, and the Attorney General disapproved that bylaw, relying on provisions in Chapter 48, Section 3, which provide enhanced protections for solar facilities, and the Attorney General found that the town had failed to advance sufficient grounds to justify an 11 and a half month moratorium on large-scale solar facilities. So while I can't say what, exactly what the Attorney General will do with this, I would ask if there is anything that distinguishes this from the previous moratorium that was disapproved by the Attorney General.
Ms. Dormer?
So, yes, the Attorney General did disprove it, but in that letter, she stated that they didn't have enough information, and that was not because it wasn't provided to the Select Board or Town Council. It was failed to be provided to the Attorney General. We did ask for the Select Board to appeal it, and they said that it would cost too much. So I think had the Attorney General been provided all of the information that we had provided on the PFAS and the solar panels and the effect on our sole source aquifer, especially with the sand mining, I think maybe it would have passed. We have 20, right now, we have 19 or 20 large ground mounted solar arrays. We really do have a lot, and I think that we need to take a step back and see how this is going to affect the cranberries, how it's going to affect the water. We have a duty to protect it.
Thank you, Ms. Dormer. Mr. Mackey?
If I could just address that, Bruce Mackey, 9 Thatcher Street, there is no PFAS on the panels. We already went through this in our committee. There is no pollution coming from the panels.
Keep it down.
It's true.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dormer?
That is not true. There is PFAS in the electrical wires, there is PFAS on the panels for the, to make them smooth. There is PFAS everywhere in the solar panels, and I think it's disingenuous for Mr. Mackey to say that.
Thank you, sir.
Bendexter, 149 High Street. I looked at the back page, it does say the planning board recommendation was three to oh. I don't know if there's anyone here from that body, but if they had, they wish to comment on that, I'd like to hear it.
So the request is for someone from the planning board to comment on their vote three zero? If anybody who's willing to comment on that?
Thanks in advance, I appreciate it.
Okay. Mr. Shea?
Yes, the planning board's concerns were in regards to the floating solar, but we had a lot of concerns in regards to other aspects of this article that are in general public information. The total number of dual-use, Item 1, solar installations in town is available down at the planning office. Anybody can go down and request it. The decommissioning terms and conditions, including the method and location, are also downtown. But as I understood it, the article is going to be amended, and the town still needs to deal and develop appropriate regulations in regards to floating solar photovoltaic installations as it has not. So the article as presented to us was presented with modifications, so I'm going to say, on my personal opinion and not through the board, that it kind of negates our recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Yes, on the right?
Karen Lappam, Main Street, once again. I just wanted to point out that I don't want anybody to think that we are not sitting on an aqua filter. There is a, there is a whole article that I've read several times from the EPA, the United States Environmental Protection Agency. It cites as 55 FR 32137. It's an environmental protection agency. It goes on to talk about our sole source aqua filter in the Plymouth Carver aqua filter area. This is dated August 7, 1990. I'm not going to read the whole entire article to you, because it's, you can read it yourself, but if you go to the very end of the article, it's going to tell you how. The EPA agreed that, yes, given this information before me, our criteria for the designation of the Plymouth Carver aqua filter as a sole source aqua filter have been met, and the region's aqua filter is a resource that fully deserves its efforts to be protected.
Thank you. Ms. Shea?
I'm Shea, 148 Plumwood Street. Again, just a point of clarification. So PFAS is not a chemical, it's a group of fluorinated chemicals, and these chemicals are the reason why we have technology. So I'm not in agreement that the statement that PFAS is not in solar panels, I do not believe that to be correct. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Okay, seeing no hands and no motion to the microphones, we'll go ahead and put Article 38 to a vote. This does require a majority vote, and we will go ahead and open the voting now and give you 20 seconds. Oh, hold on. It's a two-thirds, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll clear, we're going to clear it and then change it to two-thirds, sorry. Okay, great. All right, so trying again here on Article 38, citizen's petition to see if the town will amend Carver zoning bylaw by adding a new section 3580.70, as written in the warrant. Requires a two-thirds majority, and we'll go ahead and open the voting now and give you 20 seconds.
Voting time now.
Guys, keep it down while everyone's voting. Go ahead and close the vote, please. Okay, the motion fails with 70 yes and 151 no. Article 39, to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw 3580.70, dimension and density requirement setbacks by striking Section 3580.70 subsections 2A, 2B, and 2C. Do I have a motion? Okay, I'm not hearing a motion on this article. Move on to Article 40. Article 40, to see if the town will vote to make the following changes to Section 2230, use regulation schedule, Section C, industrial of the zoning bylaw. I'm not hearing a motion on Article 40. Article 41, citizen's petition, lithium ion battery storage, to see if the town will adopt the following general bylaw for protection of the public health, safety, and welfare. Do I have a motion? Not hearing a motion on Article 41. Are you making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded on Article 41. You have some information to provide, sir?
41 takes this-
Speak in the microphone, please.
Yes, 41 takes this out of, puts it in general bylaws. What we want to do is ban 10 megawatts lithium batteries and more within Carver. That is basically what this petition says. No more, no less. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open Article 41 up for debate. Seeing no hands raised, no motion to-
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir?
Didn't we try that three articles ago? Would it will be unlawful for anything over 10 megawatts? Just except doesn't have all the rest of the stuff that goes with it.
No, it is not.
Okay.
The last one, he's asked me a question, I'm going through you.
Yep, just wait to be recognized, all right? So yes, now you may answer the question.
No, the last one was setting up, asking for certain items that were required to put a 10-megawatt battery system in Carver, so that has failed. So now I'm pushing this one to delete 10-megawatts or more battery systems in Carver. Do you have any more questions for me, Mr. Germaine?
Okay, that's enough.
Absolutely, I do, yes.
Hey, 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 okay. You guys cannot speak to each other directly, you can only speak through me, understand?
I do.
Okay, okay. Go ahead and open it for debate. Okay, seeing no hands raised and no motion to the mic, we will go ahead and put Article This require a majority vote, and we'll go ahead and open the voting now and give you 20 seconds.
There it goes.
All right, it's open now. We'll give you 20 seconds from now. All right, everybody, we're almost done here, so just if you could keep it down just for a little while longer. All right, please close the vote. Okay, the motion fails with 84 yes and 140 no. Moving on to Article 42. Have a motion?
I have a motion.
Motion's been made and seconded on Article 42, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 9.1.4, earth removal permit requirements by inserting a new Section 9.1.4 and A and a half. You have some information to share?
We want to make a motion to amend Article 42, I provided to you earlier.
Someone's clearly giving us a signal, but we do have just a little bit more business left. Okay, so the amendment, I don't know, if you want to read this, Ms. Dormer, or?
Sure. Okay. So the amendment would be by adding, well, so adding after the C, and except for earth excavated for the purposes of renovating or maintaining cranberry bogs located in the town of Carver, or bogs located in another town and owned by a Carver cranberry grower, as long as the person conducting the earth removal submits a sworn statement to the Earth Removal Committee showing the location of the earth removal, the volume of the earth removed, the date of the earth removal, and the bog owner or operator who receives the earth material provides a sworn statement that they received the earth material and that the earth material was used on their bog for the purposes of renovating or maintaining the bogs, and was not sold for commercial or any other purpose. Can I speak on it?
What's that?
May I speak on it?
I'm sorry, what?
May I speak on it?
Yeah, yeah. So you've made a motion to amend, has it's been seconded?
Yes.
And motion's been made and seconded. Yeah, so you can go ahead and share any information you have.
A couple of things. First of all, we would like to apologize for not, for- First of all, we would like to apologize for not, for being so short sighted that we didn't think of the bog owners when we put in this moratorium on earth removal. So, and that's why we changed it the way that we did. I had the opportunity last night to speak with Mr. Ward, and this morning with Steve Ward, and, um, hopefully, we had discussions about coming together and trying to, well, trying to figure out how to stop the massive earth removal in Carver that's being commercial, that's being sold commercially. It's affecting our aquifer, it's affecting, it's affecting everything. I do want to point out that the EPA has lowered the standards, they have proposed to lower the standards for PFAS 2.0. And if we have to clean up this aquifer, it's going to be on every one of us to clean it up. That's what it says in the EPA designation. The DEP will try and look for whoever caused it, but if they can't, we're responsible for it. And there are seven towns that share this aquifer. If the other towns find out-
So, if I could interrupt you for one moment, is your, is your commentary at this point related to the additional portion, or is it the whole article?
The whole article.
Okay, so we're just voting on the amendment right now, so you'll have to keep your commentary to that, right? Okay, any, uh, any, we'll go ahead and open up for debate as to the merits of adding this new language to the, uh, motion. Sir?
Eric Weston, 189 Main Street. I'm a small cranberry farmer. I rise against this amendment, and while it might be intended to be friendly, let me explain a little bit about the business. Uh, I'm currently doing a project. I'm setting aside sand for the future to sand my bogs. I'm using sand to renovate those bogs. It's a complex process. There is suitable material, there's unsuitable material. I'm expanding a water hole because I had almost zero water during droughts. I'm putting a bypass canal in. All of this stuff has been vetted through NRCS. I even got to the point that, um, a, a group appealed or complained about a decision of the Conservation Commission. So DEP came down to look at this project, deemed this project 100% an agricultural project. Now that 100% agricultural project involving National Resource Conservation, the EP happens to have some material being sold. That material needs to leave the site. The contractor that's doing that, that's screening sand for me, there's a cost for that. So there's a comprehensive business package that goes into the whole thing. Renovating cranberry bogs, even with me saving some of the sand, very expensive proposition. So any of the money that comes in from that is going towards my renovation. While intended to maybe be friendly, this would negate and make the ability to run my business impossible. Also, it would leave a current operation, uh, in the middle in flux of a problem and be a hindrance to my neighbors, who I've worked very diligently with and have great relationships with about, I think it adds up to be about 25 of them, that I personally communicate with on a regular basis. So, keep that in mind, and I rise against the amendment.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, John Garrettson, 107 Wareham Street. I own Slocombe Gibbs Cranberry Company. We've been, uh, a participant and a good citizen of the town of Carver for 104 years. We have a resource, as you drive down the street in Wareham, going to Walmart or Target, and there's 3 million yards on one side of the street, on the right-hand side. On the left-hand side, in 1919, when my grandfather bought the property, there was a hole in the ground that was left over from iron mining days. That bog is now one of the nicest bogs that you would ever see on this late variety of house that are there. I can't be for the amendment, because this was a, essentially feedback after, by happenstance, the intention of this group is to essentially shut down sand action in cranberries. When I drive into the town of Carver, it's with great pride that I see people investing millions of dollars in renovating their bogs. It means it's going to be around for a long time to come. This is a half-hearted attempt to appease cranberry farmers that need to be renovating their bogs so that we'll be able to exist into the future. The bylaws' original intent was to shut us down and make us go away, and essentially not mine anymore in the bogs. If I don't use sand bi-yearly, I'm out of business. We redid bogs down the Wareham end of our property. It took 27 acres, it costed $2.1 million. That was money put back in the economy. That is a generational change. That's what you're seeing coming into town. You go down through the properties, the Beatons, the, uh, all the way down through Federal. Matt Rhodes has done a beautiful job on those properties there. These bogs need to be renovated. In the 1950s, as I was growing up on my dad's and grandfather's property, we were hunting berries in the woods, essentially not much more than a Neanderthal. Why my neck is so bad that we wind up looking down all the time looking for cranberries. Now we can grow the, uh, the amount that we need to, to be able to continue to have a economically reliable farm.
Sir, I don't, I don't mean any disrespect-
Entirely against this.
But you're coming up on time.
Yeah, I'm entirely against the amendment, I'm entirely against the article.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ward?
Dick Ward, 20 West Street. Been here now, close to 60 years. Started, uh, working on cranberry bogs along with my teaching. And, uh, so I, I studied that original article, and, uh, it's, in my case, I have 11 acres, and I don't have my own sand, so I've got to buy sand. And, uh, so I buy it from one of the local growers or one of the, but, um, I talked, I, I'm on the earth removal committee also, and I'm concerned with our earth removal regulations, but this is way over the top. This is going to hamstring the cranberry industry. We, if we haven't got the ability to get the materials and sand, don't forget, sand, I have, need two things, sand and water. And if I can't get sand, then eventually I'm going to be out of the cranberry business. Now, the amendment, I talked to Mary Dama, um, today, and I understand where she's coming from, but it, it got thrown at me quick, and it, it's just, I can't, uh, put it together, and I don't have the right to make a decision for our whole industry. Right now, I am ver, I'm against the, the amendment, and I am also against the original article. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Humes?
Thank you. Sarah Humes, 52 Forest Street. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I wanted to ask our town council about the legality of both the amendment and the original article, specifically what sort of jeopardy might this put the town in, if this passes.
Mr. Corbo?
Yes, thank you, through, through you, Mr. Moderator. So I'm just seeing the amendment now, so I'm less, um, prepared to, to discuss that, but generally speaking, if, if the article, um, as originally presented is before the body, um, I, I would have several concerns. First and foremost, um, there is a strong, um, preference to agricultural pursuits in the, in the Commonwealth and in the town of Carver, such that the general laws prohibit any unreasonable regulation of agricultural activities, um, both in the form of zoning or general bylaws. And, um, a complete prohibition on agricultural pursuits would likely be found to be unreasonable, particularly in Carver where you are a right-to-farm community, and you have a bylaw that recognizes the right to engage in agricultural pursuits. The, the second concern I have, and, and this would apply to the amendment as well, and that is that, um, there are several entities in town and property owners in town that, um, have, um, earth removal permits or agricultural exemptions, um, and they've relied on those exemptions to their detriment, um, and have certain investment-backed expectations that they will be able to complete those pending projects. If a bylaw such as this were to be enacted and interfere with those projects, it may expose the town to, um, legal liability, um, from those parties. So I would, um, urge you to exercise caution in considering this, um, bylaw proposal.
Thank you, sir. Who was first, over here? Yep, go ahead.
Good evening. Mary Ellen Williams, 67 Wareham Street. My family and I are very proud cranberry growers in this town, as are many others in here tonight. My great-grandfather purchased our property in the late 1800s. He built our first bog, which we are still picking cranberries from, and we maintain that bog by using sand and water, like Mr. Ward said. My great-grandfather built that bog by hand with sand. You don't have a cranberry bog without sand. Sand is vital to our businesses. It is used for planting, replanting, repairs, maintenance, and sanding to give it nutrients. I don't think that this amendment, or even the original proposal, is fair to us as cranberry growers in this town for a very long time. It is not fair to take away our right to farm. This is absurd, and I don't care what amendment you make to this, it is not fair to us because we have a right as farmers in this town. And I will ask all of you, when you came to this town, what attracted you? Because a little portion of that had to have been cranberry bogs, because this is what we're all about. And if you didn't like them, this is the wrong town for you, and you probably wouldn't have come here. So I asked that question from the petitioners that filed this, because it's just not fair. If you restrict our sand use, you're going to put us out of business, and all these beautiful bogs that you see out there, that everybody comes near and far, come harvest season, they'll be deteriorating, and people will walk away and lose their properties. So please, vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, on the left.
Uh, Joe Mix, 251 Tremont Street, and I'm also the chairman of the Carver Agricultural Commission, and the Agricultural Commission asked me to step up and ask you, good people, to vote against this. Now, as I was going through the Massachusetts general laws, I came across Art 1, Title 7, Chapter 48, Section 3, and it reads such. "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall regulate or restrict the use of materials," and that includes sand, "or methods of construction of structures regulated by the State Building Code, nor shall any ordinance or bylaw prohibit, unreasonably regulate, or require a special permit for the use of land for the primary purpose of commercial agriculture." That's the very first line, and it covers a whole bunch of other stuff. It covers houses that burn down, you can't, you know, come up with zoning and all that. So, very first line, it says, you can't regulate this stuff. If they are fa, if they are doing this under a, an agricultural, you know, land use and permit, that's the way it is. Thank you. And I say vote against.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dormer, I think?
We're not asking for, the farm, the farmers don't need a permit to sand their bogs on, in, under the Carver bylaws. We are, this is about the strip mining. You can look everywhere, and, I mean, there are trucks and trucks and trucks hauling sand out of here, and they're doing it under, they're saying that it's agriculture, it's not agriculture, they're not even paying the right amount of taxes. We have to stop it. You want to grow cranberries, that's great, you have the sand, but you're not going to have the water if you keep taking the sand out. And it is being sold commercially, and our bylaws do prohibit that.
Okay, Mr. Jermaine?
Alan Jermaine, 24 Pine. Yeah, she's right, it is being sold commercially. It's being sold commercially because the, the sand that's coming out is private property. People own the land, they pay the taxes on the land, it's private property!
Hold your applause, please, hold your applause.
It doesn't belong to them. It belongs to the bog owner. It belongs to the person who clears. They're also conveniently leaving out Part E from the earth removal bylaw, which allows you to remove earth for an approved subdivision. So this shuts down all growth for the next 11 and a half months. No new subdivisions. You can't build a house, you can't build anything. So what will happen is they'll go over ahead, go to the state, get 40B, and they'll throw all of our bylaws in the trash, and they'll build what they want to build instead of what we want them to build. This is a bad idea.
Thank you, Mr. Jermaine. Yep. Yeah, it, it's kind of hard to untangle that at this point. So, uh, it's, it's a good point. Any comments further on the merits of adding the language that we've mentioned already? And if you're not familiar, the language is up on the screen. We will get back to the article itself, so, uh, I think you on the right?
Patty Cooney, 5 Canterbury Path. We're not saying that it's an agricultural, like, we're not trying to attack that. It's the sand mining, the whole thing, like, you know, that's the part that we don't agree with, and obviously, the, um, investigator general has been coming into town because there is some sand mining going on. It is. You can't say that it isn't because they were at the town hall. So there is stuff going on that's a little unsavory, because they were here. They don't just come just to come. They were here.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no hands, no further motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put the amendment to a vote. Uh, the, um, amendment is up on the screen, but I will read it just to make sure everybody is 100% clear on this. The motion is to amend, uh, the existing article by adding the following language after the letter C, and except for earth excavated for the purposes of renovating or maintaining cranberry bogs located in the town of Carver, or bogs located in another town and owned by a Carver cranberry grower, as long as the person conducting the earth removal submits a sworn statement to the earth removal committee showing the location of the earth removal, the volume of the earth removed, the date of the earth removal, and the bog owner or operator who receives the earth material provides a sworn statement that they received the earth material, and that the earth material was used on their bog for the purpose of renovating or maintaining the bogs, and was not sold for commercial or any other purpose. This requires a majority vote, we're going to go ahead and open the vote now and give you 20 seconds. Okay, close the vote, please. Okay, and the amendment fails with 44 yes and 177 no. Returning to the main motion on Article 42, uh, any further debate? Sir on the right?
Thank you. Paul Johnson, 3 Laurie Lane. I've been pretty consistent in the time I've been here in Carver, supportive of businesses, appropriate business for the town of Carver. And I think quite frequently, we're just too harsh on business, and I think what happens here, you have to think about the unintended consequences of your actions, especially when you're talking about the agricultural operations in town. They, they, they have plenty to contend with, plenty on their plates without us adding a lot to it. If you think about what your alternatives are, I don't like sand mining any better than the next person. I had a bog built in back of my house, and a great big pile of sand has been there for probably 15 years. I'd rather have that pile of sand there than a whole pile of houses where those bogs are now, because those are my choices. It's not, you can't look at these things in a vacuum. If you're worried about pollution, think about the septic systems that don't eliminate the nitrogen. Would you rather have that, or would you rather have the bog? Bog's pretty user-friendly. Most of the growers in town let you walk your dog on the bogs. I do all the time, and I enjoy that. So you, you kind of have to look at this and regulate it in a reasonable way, and let, let the people make a living that are helping us pay our taxes, because we, we have a high tax rate, and we need to, we need to keep addressing that, because that has negatives too. So please, think of the unintended consequences of what you do. Think about what those bogs in the sand mining operations will look like if the house development's there, because those don't go away. And the, the, that bog is a whole lot nicer to look at than the development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In the middle?
Yes, I'll try to make this quick. Bendix, 149 High Street. You know, I, I-
You know, I sympathize somewhat with the intent of this article. I live probably about 300 yards from the Spring Street Innovation District. I had no idea that they were gonna remove as much fill out of that area as they did, and frankly, I found it a little disturbing, the more and longer it's gone on. But with that said, you know, cranberries are the lifeblood of this town, they're integrated with the history of the town, they're on the patches of the police and the fire. There's a reason that those banners up here represent the high school are cranberry red. So, let's support our growers, and please vote no.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Forand?
I just wanted just to say, I was born in this town, and I actually came back here to actually die in this town. And my family was cranberry growers as well. And I ask all of you, how many of you have walked the cranberry bogs? How many of you had taken your kids down for a walk by the bogs? I'm sure every one of you have personally enjoyed the cranberry bogs. And then I'll leave my statement with this, I don't support this at all. And they're bog owners, they're private property, and we wanna tell the private property how to run their business? I don't know how to run a cranberry business, but I'm done, been listening to everybody, and I know that they need sand. It's common sense. I hate it when they put sand on the ice and nobody can ice skate on the bogs. So, you know, that's what I, that's what I don't like about it, but that's the only little thing. And then I'll leave it at this, you all, I'm sure, serve cranberry sauce at Thanksgiving. It originated here in Carver, so don't support this.
Thank you, Ms. Forand.
Question?
Okay, seeing no hands, no further motion to the mic. We'll go ahead and put this to a vote. This does require a majority vote. So on Article 42, citizens' petition, do you see if the town will vote to amend Section 9.1.4, earth removal permit requirements, as written in the warrant? We'll go ahead and put this to a vote, and give you 20 seconds. And the motion fails with 28 yes and 177 no. All right, moving on to, I believe, our last item of business, Article 43, payment of real estate taxes.
One more.
All right, keep it down, we got one more.
One more.
Yep. All right, we have a motion to reconsider Article 42, it's been made and seconded. Go ahead and open it for debate.
Another question?
Okay, seeing no hands raised, no motion to the mics, we'll go ahead and just wait until we have it loaded up here. This will be a 2/3 vote. And again, a yes vote will bring it up for reconsideration, and we will discuss it again. A no vote will not bring it up for reconsideration, and in any case, it cannot be brought up again per our bylaws. So, with that said, we'll go ahead and open the vote, and give you 20 seconds. Okay, please close the vote. And the motion reconsider fails with 22 yes and 191 no. Okay, now moving on to Article 43. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a motion seconded? I'm sorry. Folks, please just keep it down. Do I have a second? Okay, motion's been made and seconded on Article 43.
Okay.
You have some information to share?
Okay, so my name's Patty Cooney, 5 Canterbury Path. Carver Concerned Citizens ask you to vote yes on Article 43. This is the article on the warrant on, well, this isn't a slide here. The purpose is to make sure land used for sand and gravel mining is paying its fair share of real estate taxes. The real estate tax process this article addresses is called Chapter 61A, a state law. Under this law, a landowner can ask the town to assess their land as agriculture to lower their tax rate. The landowner submits an application for 61A to the town assessor and says, "I'm going to use my land for agriculture and not develop it or make big profits. So I am entitled to a lower real estate tax." The tax assessor bases the real estate tax on use of the land for agriculture, not higher fair market value for development or industrial use like sand mining. The land must be used primarily for agriculture. Example, if you own five acres and not in agriculture, you pay $1,000 in taxes. If you can't claim agriculture, you pay only a few dollars. Some landowners have cranberry bogs on their property and operate sand and gravel mines on other parts of the land for years and claim Chapter 61A. For example, AD Makepeace submits applications for 61A every year for land that has sand mining and cranberries. Makepeace sells the land and gravel, sells sand and gravel through its company, Reed Custom Soils, making money selling sand, which is way more profitable than cranberries, $56 million worth. Alex Johnson, Cranberry Mackey Mining Site on Meadow Street. They've been mining for 10 years for about $5 million in sand and gravel. Taxes are only $89 quarterly, because they claim it is a cranberry farm. Johnson Brothers Cranberry, Franklin Marsh Cranberry on Plymouth Street, this is about $9 million in sand and gravel. So this is just asking you to vote yes for an audit to make sure Carver is collecting its proper taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up for debate. Yes, sir. On the right.
Gary. John Garretson, 107 Wareham Street, Carver. The inaccuracy of some of the numbers that you were just using, if I might just address, in my case, I was at a planning board hearing, and I was accused of pulling out $7 million worth of sand out of my property, and bringing it, commercially selling it. The land and the missing earth, after I explained it to my wife, didn't go in our pockets. It went down to 21 acres of land in the town of Wareham, where we redid 21 acres of cranberry bog. All of this mining, commercial mining and everything, oftentimes is just an act where people are trying to get sand, get it out, and be able to use it on their own properties. We have properties in three different towns. We moved sand out of the pit on Wareham Street to three different towns. This, we depend upon that sand to be able to have fruitful cranberry growing. That's it. That's, that is how we wish to do this. The commercial mining of sand is oftentimes something, in Makepeace's case, the Reed Sand and Gravel operation was changed to a commercial zoning operation years ago by this body. And they, the commercial material that they take out of there goes all over the northeast, even to Long Island. They'll ship custom materials out of that. But that's a separate commercial tax rate that they're doing there. To mix that up with mining and buying sand, so many people that are doing their bog renovations are relying upon the Makepeace company because of the resources of sand that they have. That's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. I believe on the left was next.
Actually, he did my, he...
All right, good. Thank you.
Good job, Gary.
All right, on the left, sir.
Eric Weston, 189 Main Street. I'm against this article, and there's a few things I'd like to clarify. This is chapter land. Many, many states, if not all, have chapter land to protect agricultural use. I'll refer to Mr. Johnson's comments earlier, which I think are very relevant. This is, we have permits, we have structures in place. This isn't Wild, Wild West. Everybody goes through a process. They also pay a tax on every yard removed that was established by this town. So that, that is, all that money is paid, it's share that the town has established or deemed appropriate, back to the citizens, which I think has primarily tried to be used for roads. So, you know, that's an uncharacteristic. It stays in chapter land, because as we deemed before, it's a complex cranberry issue. Removing sand and earth and using it in different places is part of the process. But if, jump back to Mr. Johnson, if that did not happen, and it just was not used for cranberries, did not expand bogs or water holes, then you most likely would end up with housing projects, or apartment projects, or condo projects. Because again, it's private property, it's owned by an individual, and most people are in business to make money. You know, I try to make money, I'm trying to put two kids through college. I don't wanna feel guilty for that. So, I don't think it's legitimate to throw out numbers. You know, we don't throw out what Mamma Miasa Giorgio makes. That's not relevant to the issue. It's not fair. It's also unfair, no matter what the attempt of the article is, to call out companies that reflect individual people by name, who followed rules, followed laws, followed process. But some people have issue with it. But to call them out, to put them on a warrant, to personalize this, very, very unprofessional. I do not think it's reflective of this town. I don't think it should be reflective of this body. I find it totally inappropriate. So, I hope you vote no.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, on the right.
Will Hunter, 4 Lakewood Street. I have, through you, Mr. Moderator, a question or two for the folks that crafted this. I do want to say I do agree with the gentlemen representing different cranberry bogs, that the numbers are not fair, and they're speculative. I did work for a sand and gravel concern for many years, and moved a lot of perch sand, sold the construction firms, trucks, out of Plymouth and out of Sandwich, never out of Carver. And we did sell a lot of sand from cranberry bogs, and there was a lot of money made. But I can't speculate on how much those bog owners made, or how much my company even made. I will say, the man I worked for, who I won't name, like you said professionally, was a very wealthy man. But to the people that crafted this, is this here to restrict, or to change, or prevent folks from taking dirt off their cranberry bogs? Or is this just asking for a fair audit, from a professional forensic auditor, review the classifications of these lands of 61A, because to some people in town, they appear to be commercial mining operations, rather than cranberry bog agricultural? So, may I address that question to them, through you, Mr. Moderator? Is this an attempt to stop them from doing the cranberry bog business, or is this a, just an ask for a professional review, to see if these are really cranberry operations, or if these are commercial mining operations?
Sure, I'll recognize the petitioner to answer the question.
This is just for professional, for not the agriculture, just, you know, to get it, if it's, you know, it needs to get looked at, it's for the professional side of it.
Okay. Yeah, on the right.
I just wanna state...
Speak into the microphone, please.
Karen Lappier, Main Street, Carver. Just wanted to state that I lived on a cranberry bog for 27 years, and we're not talking about the local cranberry owners that have a small business, or have a business going. My cranberry guy never had dump trucks full of sand going out. We're not talking in the categories of tractor-trailers coming in and out, in and out, in and out all the time. Those are the ones that are in the wrong spot, in the wrong tax category, the ones got tractor-trailers in and out all day long. And we know that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Steve Ward, 46 Mile Stainless Drive. Just want you to know that the Chapter 61A program, we have to file every year. It's very strict and very much a pain in the neck. So, and the Board of Assessors goes through that, and they review us very strictly. And in addition, if we didn't have Chapter 61A, us as cranberry growers would not be able to survive. So, I strongly recommend we vote no on this.
Thank you, sir. All right, seeing no hands raised, no motion to the mic, we'll go ahead and put this to a vote. This does require a majority vote, and we will go ahead and open the voting now, and give you 20 seconds. You're making a point of order? You can't just shout out. If you wanna make a point of order, then come to the microphone. Stop the vote.
Point of order, I just wanted to clarify, this is the actual vote, right?
Yeah, we're voting on Article 43, citizens' petition.
I lost track whether we were, I was up here speaking, I lost track if we were changing something, or just doing the vote, that's all.
Okay. Yep, so this is on the main motion, Article 43, citizens' petition. Yeah, we're gonna start it over again. All right, we'll leave it. You can change your vote, right? So, all right, so everyone is aware of what they're voting on. So, if you need to change your vote, go ahead and change your vote, we'll give you 20 seconds. Okay, please close the vote. Okay, with that, the motion fails with 40 yes and 171 no.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep, and I wanted to thank everyone for sitting through two nights and getting through this with us. So we got a motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye!
All those against? Thank you, everybody. Drive safely, have a great night. Appreciate your patience.